Ladies and gentlemen, we call this meeting to order for June 13th, 2023. Can I get the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Brawling?
Here.
Commissioner Kleiner?
Here.
Commissioner Morning?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Let the record show you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In light of doing a prayer this evening, Commissioner Pearson actually lost his father-in-law, so we're going to hold a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. All right. Tonight, we actually have two public hearings that we are going to do. But before we turn that over, I'm actually going to turn it over to Town Administrator Bonnenberger. This past week, we had a few calls regarding a post on a community site regarding water and sewer. And we just wanted to take a moment to address that and hope our residents will be able to see this. We have some more information that we're going to put in our next water billing cycle. But Town Administrator Bonnenberger.
Yes. So honestly, the town's position in reference to sewer and water has been a struggle for the town dating all the way back to the mid 1990s. I have, well, I've been here since 2007, which is maybe a couple of years after Commissioner Pearson was first very heavily involved in the town also. I have heard that the town's water issues can be traced as far back as the late 1980s of having different issues. The town has historically been put in water and sewer moratoriums and has had drought restrictions just simply because of the lack of water or the lack of water to meet the demand that we have. I think another thing that's very important to let people recognize when you're talking about wells and prior to the town getting water from Chester Water, I would like people to consider the area around the town of Rising Sun to be a giant kitchen bowl that you would have in your kitchen. And all the individual property owners are drawing out of that bowl. But the regulatory agencies don't go to a new single-family owner and say, "You're not allowed to drill a well and draw out of that same bowl because you're going to draw the water down from somebody else." They don't regulate it to that degree. But when you talk about a public entity, they do. And so the reason why the town had water issues dating all the way up until 2018 is that our straw was in that bowl of water along with everybody else. And because we are basically the biggest straw taking from the bowl, the regulatory people don't want us to draw the wells down of all the other individual property owners. So when the town didn't, when there were drought conditions, the town would see that very significantly because we needed such a large volume. And that resulted in the town having to bring the fire company in on more than one occasion and shuttle water out of Port Deposit and Perryville at times to fill our water tank up. So we had a water quantity issue. Now, the solution was another problem. Even though there was a lot of geographic area over top of that bowl, if you will, we were not allowed to put another straw in that bowl. We would have had to go outside of that bowl to try to get water from someplace else. And now, the town had drilled some exploratory wells right before I got here in '07. And the wells produced what could be deemed as a positive yield. But the regulatory agencies were not going to allow us to use that water as part of what our demand requirement would be to supply our residents because hypothetically, we would be taking water from all the other private, you know, property owners. So I want to, I want to make sure everybody understands that's the crust of what the water issue was for the town. The sewer issue for the town was related to the fact that our existing wastewater treatment location over on Conawingo Road there, that's essentially just, it was essentially a 10-acre pond of water, that the amount of water that came in would dictate the amount of water that would go out and out into the streams and tributaries. And we would treat that, it's probably the most elementary way of treating sewage is a lagoon system. And so we would treat that water to industry standards. But as the story goes, one of the problems was that when the lagoon, at some point in time, someone who probably had the best intentions for the town decided to argue that that tributary that was running by the pond where we would discharge was a trout stream, which meant that the regulatory threshold that you had to meet would be significantly higher. When in reality, it was nothing more than basically a stormwater culvert. They took rainwater from off the fields and then went to the stone-run stream over there. And so we had some limitations on how much sewer we could put in that small tributary that's probably no wider than maybe six or seven feet wide. And most of the time, it's dry. In dry weather, it's dry. And so we were limited on the amount of sewer that we could discharge. Unfortunately, and you're going to hear about it here shortly, the town, the best way to describe it is back in the 90s and 2000s, an argument can be made that the fox was guarding the hen house in the way we were set up administratively. We had very important position people in the town, whether they be town attorneys, so forth and so on, who actually were operating as developers at the same time they were representing the town. And so if you imagine, if you're a developer and you have three-quarters of a million dollars tied into your land development project, you're not going to take too positively to being told there isn't enough water and there isn't enough sewer capacity. So unbeknownst to the elected body, for the most part, during those time periods, they didn't realize that key people were playing to their own sheet music, so to speak, and serving their own self-interest. And so they put the town in a position where the town started approving development that far exceeded the amount of water we could pull out of the ground and the amount of wastewater that we could properly treat going into that small tributary. So that led to the Maryland Department of the Environment coming to the town back in the early, mid-1990s and saying, "You have a problem with your wastewater treatment plant, and you have to fix it. And you also have a problem with your water. You have to fix it." Now, MDE tried to take sort of a supportive role during that time period. And when you look historically back in the town's records, first of all, the town used to elect new commissioners every year. Right now, we've spread it out where there's a two-year gap in elections, which helps you build continuity. And the reason why continuity is so important is what I'm about to say. Every time a commissioner, in essence, would say, "We have solved the town's water and sewer issues. It's going to cost $2 million, or it's going to cost $3 million." Maybe they didn't do as good a job as selling the importance to the residents, and there were a lot of misconceptions on why it was being done. And quite frankly, those elected officials would be voted out of office, and we would start all over again. So when you do that over probably 10 to 12 years, your original cost to solve your sewer and water, which might have been about $2 or $3 million, soon turned into an $8.5 million project by 2008. And then there was a particular elected official who was voted into office, who decided that they did not like the idea of us doing a new wastewater treatment plant. They tried to get us to go drill wells and to do spray irrigation on farmland near here. And they furthermore filed a court injunction against the town and stopped the construction of our wastewater treatment plant, which in 2012, we signed an agreement to build a new wastewater treatment plant for $12.5 million. Now, the important thing to note here is we basically built the same wastewater treatment plant that the town talked about building in the same, in the early 2000s, but the cost went up $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 more. And so when the court injunction was filed against us, that basically put a freeze on the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. In the meantime, because this particular individual was, you know, had a very authoritative position with the town, we had no choice but to go through the exercise of exploring his proposal on how we could solve the town's water and sewer issues. And at that time, he was proposing that we drill what I believe would have taken about five or six exploratory wells about three and a half miles outside of town. Our project team did not agree with it because we already had a deal to solve the wastewater treatment plan, and we had a solution for the water. We had not one, not two. We had five different independent engineering firms look at this proposal because we knew it was going to be a hot-button topic. And the cost estimates came back, in essence, of around $38 million on the high end just to bring enough water to the town to solve the drought issues that we were having during that time. Likewise, we were working on a deal with Chester Water to spend about $8.5 million to bring the same amount of water in. So after going through all the legal wranglings, which cost the town about $250,000 to defend itself in these lawsuits, the cases were dismissed by the courts, and it went all the way to the State Supreme Court. And they dismissed it. Well, by the time we got back on track, our wastewater treatment plant, it could have cost $3 to $4 million in the early 2000s, now ended up costing $16 million to build. And then although we were able to move forward with the water project, we realized that if we were to spend $8.5 million for the water, we would get, we would get just enough water for what the town needed from a demand standpoint. And at that point, we would have been about $24 million in debt to basically just get the amount of water we needed and a little bit of capacity for the wastewater treatment plant. And when you talk about getting loans for that, because the town of Rising Sun didn't have $24 million sitting around to pay for that, so they had to get loans. To answer one of the questions, we got the loans through the United States Department of Agriculture. And the rate is like 1.5%, 1.8% on the money, but it's a 40-year loan. And you can't pay the loan off early. So I get asked this all the time. But the town won the lottery and got $1 million and paid $1 million towards the debt on it. It doesn't lower your principal and interest payments that you have to pay on that loan the way it's structured. So the town at that time, and now I'm talking about maybe 2016 at that point, realized that instead of spending just $8.5 million to bring in 500,000 gallons of water to match our wastewater treatment plant, let's spend an additional $1.5 million and be able to double that capacity and bring in a million gallons of water. And if you've been at a lot of the town meetings, you hear us talk about bringing other development into the community to get more users on the system so that we can, at the very least, flatline the rate increases that we had to put in place. So when it's all said and done, we have $26 million of infrastructure financing that we have to pay for. I can bore you with a lot of mathematics in there, but the equation is really simple. We have roughly 900-metered locations in the town of Rising Sun. You divide $26 million by 900-metered locations, and you start to recognize why the water and sewer rates are so high. And I didn't even include the number of keeping the three-phase, four-600 amp electrical system going into the sewer plant, all the wear and tear, the labor, the insurances, the licenses. Long story short, the sewer plant, the sewer and water operations combined are about $2.9 million. You'll see it more when we go through the budget. And when you look at how we do the budget, the town has never been able to build up a rainy day fund. And rainy day funds, everybody can appreciate, you know, you don't want to live paycheck to paycheck as a family. You want to put money away for those things that you need. The town of Rising Sun is no different. But we, believe it or not, as high as our sewer and water rates are, we still balance our budgets on like $30,000, $40,000 so pluses combined in the water and sewer. That's only just recently. And it always puts us in a position where if we have any kind of event that happens significant, we have to go into what rainy day funds we have. I'll close with this on it, is that when you think about the rainy day funds, you should have a year and a half worth of money in reserve for any business as a rainy day fund. The town of Rising Sun has, off the top of my head, maybe $800,000 combined between rainy day funds on sewer and water. But as I said, our operating cost is like $2.9 million. So if you're balancing your budget on $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 so pluses, it's going to take a long time to build up that rainy day fund. So in essence, the town of Rising Sun on the sewer and water is essentially living paycheck to paycheck. Now, what the elected body has done in the past, which has been great for the residents, it's been a good business decision, but it's made it difficult, is even though the town had a rate study done by a third party to figure out what the rates needed to be to pay that debt service because of COVID, because of other financial constraints, the elected body chose not to raise those rates, especially when the economy wasn't very good a couple of years ago. And I'm not suggesting the economy is much better now, but the value of houses is much better than it was. If you look at some of our statistical data between 2010 and 2016, the town lost about 51% of its equity in the, in the value of properties in the town of Rising Sun. And the town of Rising Sun gets its money in the general fund by taxes charged first, charged against assessed value of properties. So if you lose 51% of that assessed value, and to put it in perspective, when I say 51%, I'm talking about 51% on $150 to $190 million of total assessed value. So the percentage is really high in there. And so the town has been balancing its general fund on nickels and dimes, its sewer and water fund on nickels and dimes. But yet, you're going to see later on in the, in the exercise here, we're still doing pretty good. So Mayor, that, that is the history of how we got here. The math is really simple. It's a lot of debt service to pay. Yes?
Thank you.
Now, if you don't mind, Mayor, can I just interject something?
Sure.
When we were developing all of these water rates and all, we, we found companies that did this for their general business. It wasn't, as Calvin said, they were third-party. But they were, they were recommended to us by the Maryland Municipal League to use these people because that was their job. So these rates were developed with a combination of companies with their input, and that's how we got to it. Not the commissioners or anyone else, you know, doing the math and all that. Professionals did this for us.
Mayor, I think another important thing to add here is that, and I always say this, the elected officials that you see sitting up here pay the same rates that the residents do. And some of them have to answer to their wives and their significant others on why the rate is.
Family members, friends, neighbors.
I can tell you when the water bill comes every month.
So now, here are some of the things. I already said to you, the town, the elected body was very sensitive about the impact on our residents. In addition to delaying raising the sewer and water rate over a period of time, we decided not to charge for what I call imaginary water. And if you're in some, some other entities, not only just in Cecil County, everywhere you see this, you pay for a certain minimum amount of water, whether you use it or not. And think about it. The reason why they do that is that you can't afford as an entity running these types of businesses to have a huge drop-off in your revenue, and then you can't keep the electric going. You can't do the things that provide water to everybody. So you have to charge a base amount on these bills to cover that. Depending upon what community you're in, that could be a minimum of $5,000. It could be a minimum of $8,000. It could be a minimum of $10,000, or 10,000 gallons just in Cecil County alone. The town of Rising Sun bills in 1,000-gallon intervals. So what that means is you, and I heard you folks here talking earlier about the way you can conserve water, you can realize that, Golden Rising Sun, because we're not charging you for imaginary water. In some other communities, you can conserve all you want. You're still going to pay for that imaginary water. So the elected body, when you talk, when you talk about a cash flow and trying to pay this debt service, they did take a little bit of a risk and say, "Let's, let's, are we charged for what people use and give them the ability to save money in, in their household?" We also do the discounts. It's not a whole lot. It's 1%, but you're not going to find a lot of communities that do, you know, a discount if you pay the bill early. And again, when I talked about us balancing budgets the way we do, just like your household, cash flow is very important. So we need to make sure we have cash flow coming in. But we still gave people a discount on their water bill and sewer bill if they get it. So we're trading off additional money to ensure that we get the cash flow to pay our bills. So this elected body and prior elected bodies have done a lot to be very sensitive to the reality of something that we can't change. We can't go to the lending people and say, "Hey, we're not going to pay you $26 million. We're only going to pay you $15." You know, you can't do that. No more than you can tell your mortgage company you're not going to pay what, what they want you to pay. So I'm sorry, I wanted to throw that.
No, you're good.
Can I throw in one little thing right quick? Because I want to be sure that everybody understands we're not billing, the minimum bill is 1,000 gallons. But if you use 1,200 gallons, it's 1.2,000. It's incrementally billed based upon your usage after that first 1,000 gallons. Does that make sense? It's not billed in 1,000-gallon increments.
As, as opposed to being in a community that would bill you for 5,000 if you only used.
And just to confirm, Judy, when you turn on the faucet, it's not 10 gallons?
Absolutely not.
The other thing that I would like to add is the elected body and myself, as the town administrator had said, also has to pay these rates. We also go through extensive financial disclosures where we are scrutinized to make sure that everything is proper. The town is audited. In no way do we get any type of special discount or any service for free. We pay the exact same rates that every resident does. And in fact, it's sometimes very hard to have those conversations with your neighbors and friends when it comes around and the rate cycle is supposed to go up. So I want to warn you all that tonight is going to be a long meeting. We will be adopting the tax rate. We have another few things that we need to fix with our zoning code. So just bear with us as we go through this. I'm going to go ahead and, can I get a motion to suspend the mayor and commissioners' meeting for the progress of opening up a public hearing for the proposed changes to the town of Rising Sun zoning code?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding it? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We are now in a public hearing. Can I get a motion to open up the public hearing for the staff presentation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Town Administrator, discussion of ordinance 2023-08. Do you have that?
Yes. And this is an ordinance that we had submitted at the last town meeting. We did an advertisement that we were going to have a public hearing. And we also took it before the planning commission to get recommendations because it is a code change, proposed change in the subdivision and land development code. The planning commission met on this on June 4th. It was a very productive meeting, very positive. They added a lot of input into this ordinance here. This ordinance is derived from work from myself, the town engineer, the town attorney, and the planning commission. The goal here is, to some degree, remember I talked earlier about, you know, the fox guarding the hen house? And we had some negative development that has happened in the past. Well, in the same token, I talked about the importance of us having some good development in a manner that benefits the town. And one of the ways to have good development is to have a very robust land development code that clearly articulates what a developer has to do so there's no miscommunication which makes the developer get more resistant as they go through the process. What I, you've heard me say a million times ad nauseam. A good developer in a, in a reasonable development is going to pay three-quarters of a million dollars before they even put a shovel in the ground to do the actual work because of all the engineering that's involved. And they will spend that money any way you want them to as long as it is reasonable. So the work that we've been doing in the land development code is to correct a lot of bad stuff that was in the code in the past. They put maybe the control completely in the hands of the developer, and we ended up with some of the developments that we have now that are wonderful developments, but they're also ripe for some issues of streets being too narrow, you know, so forth and so on. And so this code makes changes to that subdivision regulations. The, the primary thing, a couple of primary things it does here is that it, over the years, the town of Rising Sun, when they did their code changes, they had a habit of doing one or two things. Number one, they would have an idea about something, and they would go to another community, which makes sense, and say, "How are you doing X, Y, Z?" And they would say, "We like that," and they would adopt it. Well, they might just stick it somewhere in the middle of the code, and it looks like they never were flushed out enough to realize that it created contradictions in the code. And you had conceptual ideas being handled basically in three or four different sections of the code talking about the same thing but requiring different things. We also had issues with, when they would copy and paste those codes, you could find references to the town of Northeast and Port Deposit in there because they, they didn't even go through the process to sort all that out. The other thing that somebody would do is when an issue would come up, which this is normal to do, you have a hot-button topic that you need to address, and you react to it, and you, you make a code change, and you bury it in the middle of the code instead of researching the entire code to say, "Hey, it's covered here. We can modify it." So a lot of the stuff that was fixed here tonight was to get rid of redundancy in the code, especially areas that we have been making code changes in the past. And so a couple real big salient points I want to bring out is that the town of Rising Sun is trying to control its own destiny. We don't want to be beholden to other entities that may or may not have the same level of attention to detail, not saying they're bad organizations. It's just, it's close to home, and we want to control that. So one of the things we have done is we've created our own Town of Rising, Rising Sun design and specifications manual. We're calling that the TDS manual. And what that basically means is any time a developer is building something in a development, whether it be the stormwater pipes, the sewer and water, the streets, the sidewalks, the grading, the trees that have to be planted, the road, everything you can imagine, absent the actual building itself, there are engineering, engineering standards that tell you how those things could be done. And so we're creating our own specification manual that we're not reinventing the wheel. We're just making it our own, and we're making sure that that is in this code. In the past, it used to reference the Cecil County road code. Well, Cecil County has to cover a much bigger geographic area, and so the code might not be as one-on-one relationship to what we need to have in our community. community. So we had our engineering firm develop a Rising Sun Design and Specifications Manual. And so that's going to be referenced throughout the subdivision code, basically saying, if you're putting sidewalks, saying they have to be done for, in, in relation to the TDS manual. So that's what you see up on your screen here at eleven dash six hundred. The other thing that we have done is we've added some language in here that basically says, the developer shall provide for the complete construction of street improvements, drainage facilities, and sidewalks in accordance with the requirements of the TDS manual. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but that's where we're introducing how the TDS manual plays in to the code itself. Another big area that I want to highlight to you is we've never had any language that talks about if you build a big development, how many entrances do you need to have in the development? And if you recall, what's been on our list over the last eight months now is the Stevens Preserve Development that was looking to reintroduce a land development plan that was originally submitted back in the early two thousands, but when MDE made us go into a sewer and water moratorium, that development got basically locked down. It couldn't go forward. So now that the economy's better and people want to live in the town of Rising Sun, a new developer has come in and they want to basically dust off that old plan and resubmit it. But one of the things that has happened is the town of Rising Sun has learned a great deal in the twenty years. And one of that, one of those issues is having a hundred and fifteen homes built down there. And then if you have two cars for every home and have, you know, two hundred and thirty-some odd cars all coming out by Jane's Church and probably seventy to eighty of them making a left-hand turn to go south to get to Elkton, get to wherever they're going, ninety-five, those two hundred and thirty homes are bottled, or cars are bottlenecking either at the stop sign at PNC Bank or right here in Town Square. And so we've been working with the developer. We've had good communication with them, but we've held our ground and said we're not going to accept that. And we have them working on an alternative exit and entrance to that development that will not be such a major impact to the downtown area. But we never had any language on, all right, how many entrances do you want in a development? So we've introduced, you know, a table here that says if you have between five and fifty developments, you have to have one independent entrance or exit. If it's fifty-one to two hundred, you have to have two. And if it's two hundred and one and over, you have to have three. And then there's a note underneath that based upon engineering standards and the layout of the land and the nuances of where they're building, we can require them to have even more entrances. That language was never in there before. So some of the developments, if you live in one of these developments and you're frustrated by it, you can probably trace it back to the fact that the town did not have as much oversight on that as they actually needed to. The other thing we're talking about is connectivity of streets. And in this concept, there's also a very important concept. And some of the commissioners remember, we've had proposed developments in some of the developments that were not finished where property owners came out to the meetings very upset because they said, hey, when I bought my house, they said that field was always going to be a field. And they said that road that runs by my house is never going to be continued to someplace else. Well, that wasn't true. And unfortunately, the developer did whatever they could to sell the house and told the property owner what they wanted to hear. Well, that creates a lot of hurt feelings. And so what we're putting in here is that a developer has to tell every prospective property owner when they buy a home in their development exactly what is happening with other development, other, and, and to show that roads are going to be connected from one to the other. So there isn't going to be any sort of fancy slipping paper in and out at the settlement table. They're going to be required to do that, and they're going to be required to verify to us that we have, that they have done that. So that's a concept that's been introduced. Another major concept here is the requirement for paving and how wide a street has to be can be a very tricky exercise in the sense of you could go into a residential development, you could have two separate residential developments, and you could say that the right-of-way or the paved area has to be wide enough for two cars to pass and have parking on both sides. But maybe it's more of an over fifty-five community and there aren't as many cars, or there's some kind of nuance that nobody ever parks out on the street. And so you have, and that's since what is twenty-two feet in the center that's being used for cars to pass each other, but then you have eight feet on each side, which we all know what happens, it turns into a dragway. Because it's commonly understood in development that if you make roads reasonably narrow enough, that naturally shows, that slows traffic down. So what we're doing is we're creating language in here where we are encouraging developers to pave the road more narrow, but they have to account for the parking that's going to be required there. So they would have to provide satellite parking somewhere, a little parking lot in the development. They have to provide off-stream parking, but if they're going to pave the road narrow, which saves them money, saves us money because it's less road to maintain in the future, less snow to plow, and it slows the traffic down, we're good with that, but you got to provide for parking someplace else. And so that's basically what this chart is saying, where we're basically saying, we want our roads to at least be paved twenty-two feet, twenty-two feet wide. And that means you can't have parking on either side. You have to provide for that parking, so you have to do it someplace else in the development. And maybe it's a, a parking lot somewhere. And we have also talked about putting provisions in there that instead of it having paved parking, maybe it's a patio, a paver system that allows grass to grow up between it. So behind somebody's house, although they have, they can have very well manicured trees lined around a parking lot, it doesn't have to be macadam, it could be grass and pavers that allow grass to grow up between the pavers. So in a nutshell, that is what this ordinance is doing. It's clearly defining the definition of roads and what they are. We've been talking about this probably for the last four or five months to the elected body. Most of the stuff I'm telling you is not new, you've heard it. I feel bad for Commissioner Braun, she's on the planning commission, so she sits in my office and hears it. She goes to the planning commission and hears it, and now she's hearing it now. So she could probably recite it back. But that is the ordinance, essentially the ordinance as, as it is submitted.
Thank you, town administrator. And this is going to be posted on our website as well, correct?
Yes, if it's adopted, we'll advertise it also.
Perfect. All right. Can I get, would anyone like to speak in regards to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight? Anyone online? No? Okay. Elected body, do you have any comments regarding this?
No comment.
No.
No.
We take a motion at this time?
No.
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 You have the town attorney.
Jay?
I think Jay got dumped.
The only thing I would say.
No, I'm still here. Can you get, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Calvin gave you all the nuts and bolts, and so I can summarize by saying, you need this, okay? It's a long time coming. And again, like everything we do, it's always a work in progress. This is the best guess of how we're going to move things forward. And as we go through trying it out, we may need to change some things, but this is definitely a long time coming.
The only thing I was going to say, I mean, we've been working on this since I was on planning and zoning, and that's, I mean, so over a decade now. I was bored for nine years. So I mean, this is a really long time coming, probably since you were on planning and zoning, working on this topic.
I, I heard the last five words of.
Street wits and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has been a topic in this town for decades, so I'm glad we're finally getting this resolved.
Mr. Tim Kite used to be at every meeting.
Yes. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. All right, we're going to go ahead and open up our next public hearing, which is, can I get a motion to open the public hearing for our fiscal year 2024 tax rate?
So moved.
Commissioner Kleiner?
Second.
All right.
Second.
All right. Kleiner than Warnock.
Thank you.
All right. We are now in a public hearing. Excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Staff presentation, general overview, town administrator.
Yes, so you have before you, and, and we've done, we do this essentially every year. As a point of reference, Mayor and Commissioner Warnock, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, you had presented the legislation that had been signed that changed the way you had to deal with constant yield tax rate. And that legislation would mean that you only had to advertise for a public hearing if you were actually changing the tax rate. However, we all assumed, and even the Department of Assessments assumed, that that would not take effect until the next, next year. And so we went through the process of doing the advertisement, which means we sent it to the state, they came back and said, yeah, you got all the boxes checked. We even got a reminder notice like two weeks ago saying, don't forget, you have to have your hearing, which was followed by a notice saying, you don't need to have your hearing anymore because the legislation actually took effect this year. And that surprised everybody. But since the horse is already out of the barn, it makes sense to just go through the process. So essentially, what you have here is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, which adopts the real estate tax rate for fiscal year 2024. I'm going to read through past the boilerplate language, and I'll get down to the fourth, whereas it says, the town has received notice from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation that for the tax year beginning July first, 2023, the estimated real property assessable base will increase by four point three five percent from two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, uh, two hundred and twelve million dollars, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars, to two hundred and twenty-two million, seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is a nine million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollar increase over last year. And whereas if the town of Rising Sun maintains the current tax rate of zero point four six zero zero per hundred dollars of assessment, real property tax revenues will increase by four point three five percent, resulting in a forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars of new real property tax revenues. Whereas section six dash three oh eight of the Tax Property Article, annotated code of Maryland, provides the concept of a constant yield tax rate, which requires the Department of Assessment and Taxation to certify to all taxing authorities a constant yield tax rate that will produce the same revenue in the coming taxable year that was produced in the prior taxable year. And whereas the constant yield tax rate, as described above, suggests that the town could formally adopt a new tax rate of zero point four four zero eight, which would result in a total reduction of the real estate tax to be collected by roughly four point three five percent, but would still result in the same total tax revenue collected as the year prior. And whereas the town of Rising Sun, like other small municipalities, is facing significant challenges in providing basic services such as streets and sidewalk maintenance, parks, trash collection, and other amenities to our residents. However, Rising Sun is also unique in the amount of other services that are provided through real estate revenues such as daily police patrols and protection, weekly trash, recycling, and yard waste collection, Sun Fest, Food Tank, Winter Extravaganza, Shop with the Cop, Tiger Trot, Little League Parade, Carol Sing, and other family fun activities. And whereas the past year has been challenging, as our society has faced an often fluctuating cost of inflation that is currently around five percent, but was as high as eight percent earlier in the year, and has resulted in significant cost increase for various services, such as the collection of trash and recyclables, which has seen a thirty-eight percent increase resulting in a six hundred, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-dollar, sixty-eight-dollar increase in the annual cost to collect the trash and recyclables versus only a forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight-dollar increase in real estate tax collection to help pay for these services. And whereas despite these challenges, the town continues to work to automate and streamline our services to achieve greater efficiency in services while maintaining comparable, maintaining a comparable tax rate to the other seven Cecil County towns. That is the fourth lowest overall tax rate, the lowest percentage of tax rate increase over the past seven years, second lowest real estate tax burden per resident, third lowest tax burden on the median household income of our residents. And whereas the town of Rising Sun is the only local government that provides a two percent discount on all real estate and debt service tax paid in full by August first of 2023. And whereas the elected body is committed to meeting all the challenges facing our community and to continue improving upon the services and quality of life of our residents while keeping the tax rate impact on our residents to a minimum. Therefore, being enacted and resolved that the town will maintain the current tax rate of zero point four six for each hundred dollars of assessed value for the 2024 fiscal year. Now therefore, now therefore being further resolved that the mayor and commissioners have passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this thirteenth day of June 2023. And mayor and commissioners, if I would, I think this is a very important graph to show you exactly what I've been talking about in terms of the town's position. And so some of you are familiar with this because I've used illustrations of this document over the, over the years. And I first did it back in 2017. And what I did was I figured out the, at that time, I took the assessed value of properties by the real estate rate at that time, the total number of taxable properties, the average assessed value of all properties, and the total projected tax revenue collected. And at that time, the town of Rising Sun was the second lowest cost per resident in the community based upon the total number of real estate tax that we are collecting. So what I'm basically saying is if you click here in today's numbers, if you take the amount of tax revenue that we generate, which again, we're not doing a rainy day fund, this is living paycheck to paycheck. And when you divide that by the total number of residents based upon the census, it comes out to a value of every person paying three hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-three cents per year to yield that amount of tax revenue. When you compare it to the other communities in Cecil County, you start to see where we rank up. The only community that's lower in that category is the town of Cecil County. But then I took it one step further. And let me also say that we are one of only four communities in Cecil County that provide police protection. And police protection is a very expensive endeavor. And so you have the town of Northeast, Elkton, Perryville, and Rising Sun provide police protection. But Elkton and the town of Rising Sun are the only ones to do our own code enforcement. And from the staff's perspective, how many calls do we get from people in the county just outside the town that are frustrated that properties are not maintained just outside of town, but the county doesn't have a property maintenance code? And so they call us. That's the feature that we offer by doing our own code enforcement in town. So when you look at us as being the second lowest, we're also right up there in providing more robust services for that. And so the next thing I did is that I did some comparisons, which basically amounts to a seven-year look at this from 2017 to 2023. And the numbers that I have over here in this column, the population, the assessed value, and the tax rate are all today's numbers for those communities. They're not 2017 numbers. And so when you look at it, when you look at our number here of cost per person, it went up nineteen point nine eight percent over what it was in 2017. But you look at some of the other communities, it went up twenty-two percent. But you look at some of the other communities, it went up 22%, one was 14, one was 41.23% increase per person, 36%, 17%, 27%, and 17%. We are the fourth, we're in the middle of the pack in the percentage of increase for each resident living in the community during that time. Now you look at the assessed property value, which I like to look at this chart as indicative of how lean and efficient you're able to run your business, your town. And this column, to me, represents the efforts that you've done in the community to grow the community economically and how that's translated. What I mean is, we all know that since 2017 and 2023, there's only been like five new houses built in the town of Rising Sun. And so, that's not driving the assessed values very high. When you look at other communities, it might have had 100 new houses built during that time, you can see why their assessed values would go up. And so, when you look at that, you see other communities that their assessed value went up 12.72, 7.5, one went up 55.29%, 2213, 4624, 7.38, we're at 19.49, and Cecil Town is 19.93. That's all with no new real development coming into the community. So that means the value of people's houses and properties is actually going up in our community. And we talked about that in the past, you can see it in the home sales and how quickly they're selling. This is a community people want to be at. And then you look at the actual tax rates that the different communities charge, and whether it is stayed the same or gone up. And you look at some communities, they increased their tax rate 15.9%. One lowered its tax rate 1.09. The other one maintained the same tax rate. Another one raised their tax rate 8.53%. One did .09. One was 17.34. One was 19.93. And the little old town of Rising Sun, that's living paycheck to paycheck, but providing all these services, has actually lowered its tax rate since 2017 by 4, 4.17%. But yet, we're still providing all those services. That is clearly indicative of getting a lot of bang for your buck in the community. Then you look at the median household income based upon the census. And when you compare the town of Rising Sun, being it, the median household income being $75,735, there are two other communities that are comparable with us. There are three communities that are significantly lower, and one or two others that are higher. So, our median household income is the fourth highest in the county. That puts us in the middle of the pack in terms of the wealth, position of wealth of our residents on average in our community. Then you look at the total number of housing units in the different communities. And we have 1,120 total housing units. You divide that number, those housing units, by the total real estate tax that we collect. And each one of our housing units is contributing $912.10 towards generating the revenue that's needed to provide the services. We are the fourth lowest in terms of impact or total median household income value of the amount of tax that's being paid. We are the fourth, we're in the middle of the pack. You see some other communities, it's much higher. And then here's a really telling number, is these numbers would appear to be stagnant numbers, because they're all, you know, your real estate tax divided by your number of homes. But as we've shown in some of the communities, not all the communities have the same level of wealth. And so, when you look at the, the amount of money in a median household income that's being spent towards the town's real estate tax, our number is 1.20%. You have other communities that are 2.0, 1.68, 1.63, 2.32. And you think of the impact that has as a direct one-on-one correlation to a lower median household income value. So that's really tough to, to think about, living in some of those other communities and those elected officials trying to, to create a good balance of what's needed revenue-wise versus the services. With that said, we have the lowest impact on median household income value in Cecil County. So, that is, and that's a seven-year snapshot. So I, I think that's a pretty good indicator of where the town is going.
Thank you, town administrator. Would anyone like to speak, citizen's input for the fiscal year 2024 tax rate?
I wouldn't hear for that, but you're saying, how much would it go up if you, if you left the rate the same?
Uh, $42,000.
Yeah, and if you, and if you kept, if you kept the rate the same, you'd get that much more, but the, that's because the assessment would go up.
Yes, yes.
When I was on the board years ago, we, we needed $150,000 refund in 45 minutes. Leave it the same. You can do it. And, you, you know, if we're providing services at the skin of our teeth to outside the county, quit doing it. You'll save money there.
Yeah, well, we're not. I just brought reference to the fact.
But they, they call you and all that and it's much help.
And we just say sorry.
Yeah.
And that, the only thing we do is we send an email to the county saying you have someone picked up.
Yeah, but again, in this day and age, even though we might be able to afford it, the median income is that high for everybody, or we're in the middle of the, we're in the middle of the county, not everybody's in that position. So, you're gonna hurt them. Last year, I got a notice from the, you know, when, when the county sent out the tax bill. They said, well, we love it, the rate didn't go up. But the bill went up because of the assessment. So, you know, you're getting behind just by staying even. And also, as far as, like you said, we had five new houses built, and other towns have a lot more built, because they had, when they had 100 houses built, it raised all the rates.
Skip, I know you're a resident, but could you, just for the record, give your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Yeah, Skip, use 36 West Terry Street.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You're good, no worries, Skip.
Anyway, that's another reason, the bigger you get, the more it's gonna cost. And that's one reason I'm against that kind of group. It doesn't help. It makes it, it makes it worse on if people have been here for 40-some years, they have 500 new people. The other 2,000 pay more for them. And that's always been a problem. Bigger is not better.
Thank you. Anyone from the elected body like to speak? The only thing that I'd like to say is, this town elected body has tried their best to cut taxes. We were able to do it twice. We had instructions to the staff to make this work with keeping the tax rate the same as it was, and they did a great job of preparing this for us. So, thank you to Calvin and to Judy for working hard on this, because I know it was almost impossible, especially with inflation and the increase from the trash hauler, which were two things that were really unexpected this year. So thank you for your hard work on that. Closing comments from the town attorney?
You know that you're under the gun. This is the meeting where you have to adopt this, and I think it's been thought out, but you have to adopt a tax rate by the end of, by the start of your new fiscal year. And I've been impressed, you know, I represent many towns, and you must have a money tree out back, because you seem to be able to do everything with a little bit of nothing. And I'm usually impressed by that. Most of my clients can't seem to pull that off, so. Everything else legal is ready to go.
Do you have any other comments, town administrator?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing adjourned. Can I get a motion to open the mayor and commissioners' meeting for June 13th?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now in a town meeting. Town administrator, consent agenda. Do you have that?
There are three items on your, on your consent agenda, and you can just make a motion to approve the consent agenda, or you can pull some of these items out if you want to deal with them individually.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. All right. Town meeting schedule at a glance, as you can see, we're going to have our town meeting in July on the 11th, and then August the 8th. The town holiday schedule is scheduled to be July the 3rd and July the 4th for those holidays. We have no public presentations. Town administrator, unfinished business?
You just have the ordinance 08, that we just went through the discussion on that. You could consider it for adoption tonight, or you could table it for a future meeting.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2023-08.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? It's a long time coming, as Commissioner Warnock said. We definitely need to have rules in place for the width of our roads, as well as many other things that are addressed in this code, to when development does come to the town of Rising Sun, that we're doing it in the right way. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 2023-08 is passed. Resolution 2023-09, which is the fiscal year 2024 tax rate.
Same thing.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kleiner? All right. Commissioner Kleiner, beat Warnock and Pearson this time? Any discussion? As I said, with inflation being the way it is, and with us seeing a significant increase, we are doing a lot with what we're able to, to have. So, thank you to the staff for working hard on this and for maintaining our tax rate. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. All right, new business. Right. Resolution 2023-10, which is the fiscal year 2024 budget and collection rates. Town administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. And this segues into the budget that we were just talking about. Our budgets have pretty much been running like clockwork over the years. They all sort of come within, you know, the same, the same expenses and the same revenues. Some of the big changes that we'll see, we've seen an increase in income tax, that's why our revenue spike is up. The other reason why our revenue on the general fund is up is because we have some projects that we're able to do through the ARPA funds. And so, if we're gonna have the expense from a simple accounting standpoint, if you're gonna have the expense, you gotta show the revenue coming in on the revenue side. As, as an interesting point, the ARPA funds have generated a significant amount of interest on that. And under the federal regulations, we get to keep that interest. And so, we're earmarking that for something that's long overdue, which is cleaning and scraping the water tower, repainting it, doing some inspections on the inside of it, and then improving the base station that we have at the water tower. Some of the commissioners might remember when somebody hacked the communication system at the water tower, so we're gonna be beefing all of that up over there. So that, that alone was, I think, something like 50 or 70,000 dollars of increased expenses that are offset by the interest on the ARPA funds alone there. You guys have had a chance to look at the budget. It's, it's a lean budget. Let me go to the bottom of it. You'll see where the projected revenue versus expense, when I talk about balancing the budget, we have a $5,203 projected surplus there. So we're running it lean. As we have done, we, what we historically do is we estimate our revenue low, and we typically go over that revenue, and we estimate our expenses high. Even though we don't really, per se, have a rainy day fund, we still get very aggressive about, you know, projecting some of the expenses to, and we typically come in under that expense. If you recall and looking at your audit reports every year, we come in under the expense and over the revenue just about every year.
Calvin?
Yep.
We've all had a chance for a couple of weeks now to review the, the budget.
Yeah.
If we don't have any real concerns, do we have to go through the whole reading of the resolution?
Well, I think, well, I, I think you should, so the residents know what the rates you're setting are in there, because this budget is based upon various rates. Let me say this, if you don't have any more questions on the line items in the budget, we can go right to the resolution.
I don't. Because, I mean, I'm reading, a lot of this goes right back to Resolution, Resolution of 9, and a lot of we're, we're repeating, just repeating the same things that were written in that res, in that ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
Go to it, you're good.
All right. So, then what you have before you in Resolution 10, bringing that one up, is you have the resolution before you, which adopts the annual budget. Commissioner Pearson is correct. For a historical standpoint, when somebody opens up a resolution in the future, they can see where you came, how you got to that point. So I'm not gonna repeat all the whereas that were at the beginning. We've already talked about our tax rates. And what I'd like to do is, your, this resolution says that the primary government fund has a balanced budget by way of reserve fund transfer to reflect possible expenditures that will be tied to the American Rescue Plan and the American Jobs Plan. The fund has total revenue projections of roughly $2,945,295, and projected expenditures of $2,940,092, and will result in roughly a $5,203 surplus, which you saw on the previous budget sheet. And on the proprietary, proprietary fund, we have a balanced budget with the total revenue projections of roughly $2,506,132. And on, on the, gosh, I'm trying to see which one. Actually, we're not saying which one's water and which one is sewer.
No, you haven't.
In here. And the other revenue on the one account is $2,501,007, oh, I'm sorry, expenses, yeah, revenue is $2,251,702, and will result in a surplus of roughly $39,780.95 between the two accounts. And here's the stuff that's important. Whereas, this budget will be based upon the following already established tax rates and service charges as follows. Item number one, as we read in the resolution, we're keeping the tax rate the same at 0.46 for each hundred dollars of value. The Cecil County Department of Finance will collect the real property tax and the debt service and utility tax listed on the annual real estate tax bill on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. The town will continue to provide a 2% discount upon payment in full of any real property tax, if taxes are paid in full by the end of July 2023, and a 1% penalty each month for any payment received after October 1st of 2023 and until the balance is paid in full. Such taxes on land and improvement shall be computed on the valuation of said properties as certified to the town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessment. The tax rate for all tangible personal property of business, utility, or contract carriers operating in the corporate limits of the town of Rising Sun shall remain at 0.90 for $100 of assessed value of all tangible operating personal property, including commercial property. That's never been raised since I've been, I've been here. I think that might be going on 25, maybe 30 years of the same rate. It's been a long time. In computing and levying such taxes on tangible personal property, the valuation of said property as certified to the town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessment shall be used as the assessed valuation of tangible property. Number six, the town shall maintain one flat $384.36 debt service and utility tax assessment on all real property tax parcel that is currently developed or is vacant, not developed, but can be developed in accordance with the town zoning codes, unless such property is declared non-developable and currently exempted, as spelled out in Resolution 2023. non-developable and currently exempted as spelled out in resolution 2016-10. The charges assessed against an individual dwelling unit and/or commercial space with the intent to have each unit cover a portion of the cost related to debt service financing of town buildings, parks, and property, past utility upgrades, vehicle streets, and sidewalk restoration, and regardless of the types of services provided, the level of services or the lack thereof, this assessment will be reflected on the annual real property tax bill issued by the county and will be subject to the same discounts and penalty fees as real property tax. Properties with multiple dwelling units or commercial spaces shall be charged a debt service for each of those units, which will be carried on the utility bill. Number seven, the town shall collect on a regular schedule without extra charge all normal household originated trash and recycling from single-family dwellings in accordance with chapter 7 of the town code. In addition, certain commercial properties and locations with multiple collection points may also be provided services in accordance with chapter 7, with the cost for these services to be assessed in accordance to the town's fee schedule as adopted and modified by the Maryland Commissioners. Eight, some revenue projections as shown in this budget are related to fees as indicated in the town's current fee schedule as set by resolution from time to time by the Board of Commissioners. Number nine, the town's utility rate will continue to follow the prescribed pro forma plan for water and sewer as adopted by resolution 2016-13 and is modified from time to time by resolution of the Maryland Commissioners with the rates to match the project charges for the calendar year 2024 as shown in the town's water and sewer rate table. Ten, discounts for early payment of utility bills, fare to pay utility bills, building permits, and other service fees due to the town will continue to be spelled out in the town's adopted fee schedule, which can be amended from time to time by resolution of the Maryland Commissioners, therefore being enacted and resolved by the Maryland Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, wish to adopt as proposed fiscal year 2024 annual budget to include the tax rates and service charges as set forth above.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash 010?
So moved. Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2023 dash 10 passes. Town Administrator, ordinance 2023 dash 09, which is recyclables, yard waste, and bulk trash collection. Do you have that?
Yes. And this is something that I'm suggesting you consider as an emergency ordinance because it ties directly to our trash and recycling efforts that we are doing. And what this basically comes down to is the town, despite having different entities buy the original trash hauler for the town of Rising Sun, has been using the same trash hauler for longer than I've been here. It might be 20, 25 years itself, which means there have been cans and trash receptacles that have been distributed out through the community and we're not exactly sure why that was done when your trash and recycling is typically a service provided to residential properties and not commercial properties. Furthermore, if you remember the resolution that we passed about a month ago, we saw our annual trash collection go from a projected cost of $173,000 to conceivably $513,000 when we put it out to bid. We had to modify it to get it to the point where it's at now, where it's only a $62,000 increase. But in doing that, we're going to be collecting all the trash cans in the community by the previous owner, which means we're going to have to distribute new trash cans, which means we can get back to making sure that each property gets one trash collection and they pay for that. It's going to cut down on the amount of properties that might have two or three trash cans out there and they're putting a whole bunch of additional trash in there and we may or may not be being charged by the trash hauler, which I've always said means that the little old lady on a fixed income on Main Street is having her real estate tax be used to pay for people that are not paying hypothetically their fair share. So we always strive to make that more fair and equitable. So this ordinance is clearly identifying the intent of the trash collection, which is for single-family homes. But it also provides for what I would call low-impact commercial businesses, that all they are doing is producing basically the same trash and recyclables that a homeowner would, meaning they're not a restaurant producing a lot of food waste or animal waste. They're not a blue collar business that's throwing out electronic boards because they're, you know, fixing computers and stuff like that. It's related to household trash. So we provided a mechanism where we can continue to provide that trash service to those low-impact businesses as opposed to them having to go out and pay for a dumpster and try to find a location to put a dumpster on their property, especially if they're located on Main Street. So this is going to clean up a lot of those issues. It's going to make sure that we are, that the money we are paying is in direct correlation to the amount of people that are getting the service and are paying for that. So that's essentially what this ordinance is doing. It establishes that what we're going to do is in our fee schedule, we're going to take the mathematical calculation of essentially the $243,000 a year that we're going to pay to have the trash and recyclables collected. We're going to add on the charge we pay the Cecil County landfill to dump that and we're going to come up with a per-unit charge. And then any rental properties that have two and three units in them, instead of them all being able to dump that trash in the same trash can and put trash bags out there and we get billed for that, but they only get billed for one trash can, they can get additional trash cans, but they're going to pay per that unit cost. So that's where we're at with that. It's an effort to make it more fair and equitable.
And Town Administrator, you've, sorry, Town Administrator, you've had conversations with the elected body about this. I think we're pretty well educated on it. What it comes down to is that we've seen an increase, we're getting a new hauler, and that every person has to pay, they get one can for that payment, and if they want more than that, then they have to contact us and there'll be a charge if there's an additional can.
Right. And Mayor, let me just bring it back full circle. When I did the evaluation of our tax rate, the reason why we're down on that lower end is we don't make, we make sure that people that require a unique service are paying for that service and it's not being absorbed by everyone else. Because if you don't do that, the only way you can cover that expense is to raise your real estate tax and then everybody pays for it.
And just to confirm, they'll have regular trash and then also recyclables. So there'll be two cans for both, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think it's probably in our best interest to have this approved as an emergency based upon the fact that we're getting ready to start this new trash collection cycle. What is the board's pleasure?
Agree.
Okay. Could I get a motion for that?
So moved.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion regarding ordinance 2023 dash 09? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. All right, Town Administrator. Last but not least, resolution 2023 dash 11, the fiscal policy.
So, Mayor Commissioners, this is something that as a staff, we're very proud of. We've come to you guys several times over the years on amendments on fiscal policy. But we all know, we had very early on in the 2000s, we fell victim to a lot of, a lack of internal controls that resulted in theft of money from the taxpayers. And those people were held accountable, but we had to create good internal controls in fiscal policies. So that's something that Judy and I look at on a regular basis. And one of the things that we realized in our existing policy is that although we do certain things like cybersecurity and we have internal processes, we don't make it clear that the town's taking the position that that must happen. And you do that with the idea that in case Judy and I or anybody else involved here now is no longer here 10 years from now, we still have the requirement of a fiscal policy in place. And one of the things we want to make sure is that if the town automates and people become more comfortable with using their credit card to pay for things, we want to make sure that we're putting policies in place that we are never going to write a credit card number down. We're going to key that into the system. And then once it's in the system, you can't go back and retrieve that number. We're doing things like making sure with sophisticated cybersecurity that anything we're transmitting over the internet does not have that important information. The last thing we want to do, and I'll say it to you this way, Judy and I have talked about it, you can go to a business and be the victim of fraud and you can say, you know what? I don't feel comfortable going to that business anymore because I got taken advantage of financially. Unfortunately, we're the town of Rising Sun and you have to do business with us. And so we don't want to have our residents in a situation where they're exposed to something that they can't just pack up their business and go someplace else unless they were to move out of the town. So we want to make sure our systems are full of integrity. And that's essentially what this fiscal policy does. It corrects some punctuation and grammatical errors in the document, but the meat and potatoes of it is to put internal controls in place using industry standard guidelines for the processing of credit cards.
And just to confirm, Town Administrator, this is something we'd already been doing, but it's getting put into writing.
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash 11?
So moved. Second.
I think that was Warnock and then Pearson. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2023 dash 11 passes. All right. Citizens input, would anyone like to speak this evening? All right. Moving forward into staff reports, Town Administrator, do you have anything to report?
The only thing that I would like to put on your radar is that in our zoning code, now that we're issuing trash cans and we're ratcheting up the rental inspection program, we do need to figure out how we're going to deal with properties that have been converted to multiple units, which is not get prior approval to do it. It is not uncommon, and it is in the town zoning code, that you can't turn a single-family dwelling unit into a multi-unit rental property without at least getting a variance and special exception. And we know there's probably a good number of properties that did that. And so the exercise for the elected body is, are we just going to set a hard-line policy going forward and say from this point forward, we're just going to sort of automatically declare, I don't want to say grandfather, that's not the right word, we're going to declare everything a legal non-conforming use. The downside of this, Chief Peterson can relate to this, we have some properties that we believe they've turned sheds and garages into multiple units. And so we don't want to be in a position of saying, we're going to do this from this point forward, and then when we try to take legal action in the future, somebody can say, well, you knew I was doing it because you issued me five trash cans or you charged me for a debt service. And so I want to put that on your radar to see if you're interested in the town, Tony and I figuring out, you know, a policy and how we're going to deal with that. Because that can lead to a lot of unintended consequences down the road.
I think the answer is yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Chief?
I have no report for today.
All right. Town Attorney?
As you know, we had our first successful tax sale last week. There were no bidders because the price was exorbitant. There was only one property for sale. And so six months from that date, the tax sale will now, the tax certificate will mature enough for the town, who is now the owner of the tax certificate, to take it to court and foreclose. So that's where we are. There's a lot of notice that has to happen between now and then.
Long time coming, Jay.
It has been, you know, the old adage, if you want something done right.
Do it yourself. Thank you. Assistant Town Administrator.
You know, I really want to talk just for a second about the conversion, the trash and recycle conversion, because we're going to do our best to communicate to everyone what happens. There's going to be a schedule in lid of the trash cans, everything that you'll need to know is going to be, there's going to be a flyer in the actual trash cans. But we're going to start deploying and it'll be deployed by street on June 26th. They're expected to be finished in the 26th, 27th, 28th, hopefully finished by the 29th. Some changes, and there's changes as Calvin alluded to earlier. When we were looking at how we get a better price, as we went up with RFP, we didn't get something that the town could live with. We started having private meetings with haulers and saying, this is what we would like. Can you, can you put together a price? We got prices from smaller and larger companies. The town, the residents, we do have to make a concession. It's different. It's going to be different, not really concession. But trash will be picked up on Tuesday. Recycle will be picked up on Thursday. And then any missed trash, call us immediately because they will come back if they're still around. If not, they'll get you on Thursday. So we have very, looking forward to a really great relationship, but it is going to require us all to work and to get it to where it was affordable with a lot of effort.
And I know I speak for all of us, Judy. Thank you for spearheading that. I know it is a large undertaking and it is going to be a change for our residents. It will be.
It is.
But it's something that we had to do based upon what we could afford and we look forward to the new relationship with our new hauler.
Mayor, one of the things, and I don't want to put you on the spot, is that we also have to be very mindful of the benefit of recycling. Our community used to be a very good recycler and we used to get awards. It hasn't been over the last couple of years. And I want to give you the cost for that. We're talking about costs going up. For every ton of recycling we dispose of, we pay $29.
Twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty per ton. For every ton of trash we dispose of, it's $79.
$79.
$79 a ton. That results in significant amounts of additional money we have to pay the county landfill because we're not recycling. So again, when I go through the exercise of showing how lean we are, those profit margins and margins are not very great. So if we're not doing a very good job of recycling, that just drives our price up higher and higher.
Calvin, in the next water bill, state that exactly.
Yeah.
So that people understand. You know, right now, they figure, oh, we just throw it in the trash if it didn't, you know? That way they'll see the significant cost to us.
It's also important that the recycling be clean recycling.
Yes.
Because people put plastic bags and stuff in the recycling.
It's the whole thing.
It contaminates it and it winds up going in. Actually, we pay penalties for that and it still goes in landfill and we pay trash rates.
Yep.
That's all reflected in the emergency ordinance you just passed.
Yeah.
Is all that language in there.
All right. Moving forward into the mayor's report, as you know, we recently just had Sun Fest. It was a great undertaking. A huge thank you to our town staff as well as our Public Works and Police Department for all working together, as well as the Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce and their volunteers. It was an outstanding event. It was very well received and there were a lot of folks out. So it was great to see so many people out within our community. I also wanted to just say that it's been a long time coming with 16 East Main and the issues that we've had with it. I look forward to us moving forward with that building and potentially putting it back on the market for someone to take. Our Main Street has definitely come back to life and that's the last little bit that we're trying to change. So we look forward to that. Last but not least, the elected body as well as folks are invited to the old Kilby Cream property for the ribbon cutting of their new ice cream spot. It's new owners and it's called the Inside Scoop. That's going to be at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday. 10:00 a.m. on Saturday. And that's this Saturday. I'll be providing a citation to them and hopefully some of our elected body members will be able to come out for that. Moving forward into Commissioner Cummins, Commissioner Braun.
I have no report.
Commissioner Kleiner.
No comments.
Commissioner Warnock, yeah, Commissioner Warnock.
Sure. The one thing I have tonight is, so the latest Eagle Scout project has completed at Vann's Park. You know, there's still some cleanup around it. You know, there's still some cleanup around it, like in the way of grass growing back and things like that that we're going to have to work on soon, but the section of trail from the kind of bridge, I wouldn't say the bridge to nowhere, it's a bridge in the middle of nowhere, is completed, allowing for people to get from kind of the dry side of the park over the really wet little stormwater management swell over to the basketball courts and then into the trail system in the woods. So that has been completed by Nathan Benningfield, his brother's actually one that built the bridge, and so that, we should have him in at some point in the near future for a presentation, probably August, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Commissioner Pearson?
I have, I actually have several things. First of all, at the last meeting, we had a scout who was here for his government bat, his name was Ian Kohler of Troop Twenty-Eight. I didn't recognize him, but I did talk to him afterwards about that. Also, I failed to congratulate the Rising Sun softball team for winning the state championship. The last thing I have, schools out. Kids are going to be out on the streets at different times than just bus stop times. So just be careful, you know, be mindful that there's going to be more kids out. That's the end of my report.
All right. The Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission's schedule is seen on the agenda as well as any upcoming town events, which includes Juneteenth as well as Independence Day. Trash, yard, waste, and recycling is also listed. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there anything else to come before the board? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.